A construction manager is not.
Okay, that's why I want the right terms, service. When we did this bridge right here, Carroll Bridge, which for me was a huge project. And we looked at construction managers like that. We weren't even allowed to, they didn't give us the price. We had to select by their, according to state, we had to select by their qualifications. Red score according to their qualifications there. They did not want you, the state did, to pick by lowest dollar. They wanted you to pick the best person to do it. And... I guess I believe we did pick the best person. But can we go back now and ask for others, if non-CMC to do it, to bid or not? Since we've already signed this one with Jack.
You've already destroyed the competitiveness.
Right, because he's all put right, put all his price out there.
We invited him to do that, and he did it. And it would be highly regarded, probably not illegal to be that.
That would indicate anywhere else could bid, and apparently you weren't very happy with that price. I mean, I don't know why it would hurt.
You know, Bill, we, I can say when we did our project, the last one, that we canceled. We had a meeting, we brought them in, there was only two or three of our member right. We canceled that after listening to them. We advertised, and I understand Tobe's, with him wanting the jail going as soon as he can, I understand his figures. But to make this right, being a fourteen million dollar project, when ours was seven and a half million, we re-advertised. And we ended up with six or seven contractors coming in to bid on it for the project manager. And then we selected. Now, I just think we need to, I think, I'm telling you how to do your job, but I think, I just think you need to, this big of a project, before you spend fourteen million, we need to get the right person. And I'm not saying you haven't got the right person, but might be the right person for the right dollars.
And because there are so many methods of doing it now, it could not be price-based. You would have to do it qualifications-based, like you described, and that requires you to do it on those projects. You'd have to be qualifications-based and then negotiate a price with the one that you want.
Dave, was you involved in any other contracts? Because right now, we're in a contract envelop office, and it's coming up pretty quick to where we need to be doing something. Was you involved in anything like that with an architect on your...
Yes, we already hired our architect. We hired our architect, got our design.
But did it take you ninety days or anything like that to make sure we got the right location? That's where we're at. We're at the point where we need to be moving, or it's going to cost us more money.
Ours just, in the school industry, you have to give so many days, you gotta have the hearings and everything.
Right.
And that's all we had. No, we have the land, you know, we just added it to the school, so.
Okay. See, that's kind of what, I believe that we were fighting there for a while. No one could come up with the right location. Then we had to hire someone to do the studies on the sites we did. And that took ninety days, seemed like. I mean, we're already paying this gentleman right here, he's been here several times on his own dime, I believe, and thank you very much. I think where we're going is, we keep going backwards on everything. We had a jail study done. When I first started at jail, you know, we spent almost fifty thousand dollars on jail studies in the last thirteen years. And now we're estimating, what, fifty thousand a month for every time we don't start building? Because the projects and the materials are going up, the construction people are already hired somewhere else. You know what I'm saying? It's just going to get harder and harder for us. And I think, in my personal opinion, I think we did choose the right person, even though we didn't do it for competitive bidding. I picked the person that was good to do the job right that we wanted. And that's how I felt.
So does anybody have the answer to that? If we put this out for rebid, you're thinking it's going to put the project behind? But we're not going to start construction in that for, I mean, we're in the design phase and the architect phase, correct?
We're at the point where we need to start doing the soil samples, where we need a construction manager. And we're in the phase of doing the utilities. So we need someone to work with the people that's doing the survey and all that right now, the sample book, you know, to make sure we're good.
No matter if the fee is twice what, you know, twice what it really should be or without any negotiation of contract or anything.
I think they'd all be, I think they'll all be the same within, despite that.
But how can you assume that?
Well, just by the way Ted was describing the other procedures, you know.
Well, see, and I'm not saying you go at the CMC. I just, you maybe you need to open up the bids to, you know, to have some negotiations, to see if that is the correct rate. I mean, until you open bid, I don't know how you're going to assume that that is what, I mean, I know you trust Jack, but...
Right. I see where you're coming from.
I mean, as a councilperson, I can't go forward and just say we gotta move on this because, you know, we're talking fourteen million, four more dollars. So I think you need to take your time.
Well, that's where we need to decide where our caps go. No one's ever discussed that, on what we can actually be bonded for.
Just to clarify, this contract with Mr. Kraus is canceled per action of the council in their meeting last Thursday. This is not an active contract, correct? By Indiana code, based on vote from the council to not fund it, that cancels.
That's not true.
That's not true?
No.
The commissioners selected the contractor, and if the commissioners don't want to go forward with that contract, they can notify the contractor, the construction manager, that they don't want, doesn't like funding. But as far as selection of the contract event, it's up to the board of commissioners as the executive county. The council cannot cancel or make contracts for the county.
I'd like to clarify a couple of things. First of all, the council did not take any official action during our budget hearing. We had a regularly scheduled meeting on the third Thursday, as we do every third Thursday of the month. And during that meeting, this was heard, so I'd like to clarify that. I'll just read this code, it's just a couple of lines. This is Indiana Code 522-17-5. Funds not appropriated or not available, cancellation of contract. When the fiscal body of the governmental, fiscal body of the governmental body makes a written determination that funds are not appropriated or otherwise available to support continuation of performance of the contract, the contract is considered canceled. That is the action that was taken at the council meeting.
Is that the action, I need to understand that, that's what they did?
Yes. And I can refer you to our term specifically. That was discussed in the debate.
I don't remember the IC code there.
What was the motion? I want to review the motion.
Let me have that option.
That's not my understanding. What was inside?
Five, five dash twenty-two, dash seventeen, that's what.
My understanding of the reaction was that the council would not, would not fund it unless the commissioners hired a CMC. That's my understanding of what the motion was.
They did, they did decide not to fund the contract.
They did.
I missed some of that, though. What did you say?
They, they made a motion not to fund the contract, I believe is what it was.
But it was not a motion to only hire a CMC?
I don't believe that was in it.
No, the delivery of, the delivery method of the contract was not the point of discussion. The vote was based on funding of a contract that didn't have any spending caps, that we felt like wasn't competitive and wasn't in the best interest of the county. I specified in the meeting, our margins on this project are already pretty slim. And so if you enter into a construction management contract that stretches those margins even more, I mean, to Tobe's point, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars projected to house out-of-county inmates. We don't have the cushy margins to then spend over a million dollars. There are different budgets, I get it. But the point is, it is going to lay on the taxpayer's shoulders. We don't have those margins. This contract will end up being over a million dollars. And it wasn't discussed with any other organization or bid out to anybody else. The delivery method wasn't the issue. The spending and the cost of it was the issue. So it was voted down to not fund it.
Where that figure of overall pay was drawn up?
I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, Jack said that's not close. Close between six and seven fifty is what he said it funded.
That's your base cost. That's your base cost. There's pre-construction costs, there's a lot of additional costs built into this. I mean, I've read it.
Just for some texture, the Rush County Jail, which CCI is the contractor for, or the construction manager as agent there, I can give you the exact number here. The fee, the Rush County, which they hired, they hired them three and a half, about three and a half years ago. CCI has already been paid one million seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And there is an additional expected of fifty-eight thousand nine nineteen for a total of one point one three four eight million. And that is a hundred and nineteen jet benefit facility that he's constructed.
Dave, do we have a final figure? Do you guys know how much you can spend on this project?
No, because we don't have a bond yet.
So we don't know if we can spend twelve million, or fourteen, or fifteen million.
We don't even know if we can spend eight million now.
Well, we were all in that meeting, guys, I mean, we...
Yes, we got twelve, twelve point seven.
We said, the motion that this board made was for the project not to exceed fourteen and a half million in total cost. And the council has made all the due diligence to make that funded.
So do we have fourteen and a half million to spend without raising property taxes?
I think we can get right there, Dave.
I mean, we give that LIT, that's going to be like nine hundred and some thousand a year. And I don't know.
Crazy?
The debt service on twelve million.
Is it really going to push back the project and not really get started? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Yes. It will push it back. Is it worth it to push it back, maybe?
I'd like to speak to that.
Sure.
To my understanding, the project is intended to break ground in the spring. Is that your understanding as well?
That'd be nice.
Okay. The, I spoke with the commissioner from... Sorry. Hancock County today. And they, from the time they went to bid to breaking ground, was less than two months. That's, you can call him if you'd like to speak to him.
We did the original Hancock County jail. They've been working on that project for four years.
From the time they went to bid until...
Oh, yeah, all right, yeah. Which time? They've been, they bid this one twice.
From the time they went to bid, and I, I didn't interrupt you, sir, so I... Please ask you to not interrupt me as well. The, from the time they went to bid until they broke ground was two months. And they broke ground last month, they went to bid, or last week, they went to bid in July. So I think that is a two-month period. We're, what, nine months, seven months from April first? So, just for, just back to the conversation.
We just have to get somebody in the utility, the sample board, the survey. So I guess I'm just lost in the middle of it. Because my understanding was, is we got everybody, they're bucking the road and ready to move forward with all this. And we have to have somebody there that we trust to move forward. So if we stop and put this out for bid, which doesn't matter to me, I mean, we can do that, but it won't be fair to Jack because to me, it's his bad business. But if that's what we gotta do, but we have to have somebody there that we know that we can trust to get this project going forward. And I think the only way we can do that is have an executive session, and have them come in and talk to us one-on-one. And then we're very well together, tell them who we, who we decided.
Well, I'll take them over there if you're interested.
Who do the executive sessions?
Good to know that you have them.
How much you, you're gonna have one commissioner interview?
I don't know, it gets me every time.
You're not hiring them as an employee. Well, if you're hiring as an employee, you can have an executive session. Not as a contractor.
That's what I'm getting at. She's right. They say just get a presentation.
Well, they say they just get a presentation. Yeah. Fees is going up, that we have hired, or hired the same company to do the site survey work and to do the civil engineering to do the site work out there and been surveying to do the utility access. Now, will, let me ask you, will they report that to you as the architect?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the fact that we don't have a project manager in right now probably would not affect that part, would it? If they'll go out there, they'll do that work, and they'll turn it over to you.
For the next few months, not having a project manager is not going to affect them, they have a lot of work to do. Most of it's with Tobe and commissioners to finish the design process. But after a couple of months, we'll start needing input. So, and this won't stop us. In fact, we're, you know, the...
Did you say that last week?
This will not stop us in our tracks, we're going to keep going. But there will be a point, probably by Thanksgiving, this isn't decided, then it's, we'll have some issues, but...
Well, I think we have two issues in here to decide. One is what type of delivery we want. Are we going to go with a project manager? Are we going to go with a CMC type of contract? And do we want to open it back up again, even though, right up there to Jack, do we want to open it back up again and ask for one of those two, whichever one we decide on, to put in their bids or their qualifications? I think we have to decide what we're wanting as a delivery before we decide that we're going to open it back up again. Jack?
I'm hearing, or I'm sitting, in case you don't know who I am. Ted's been very good about saying what he doesn't like about the CMC. Could you maybe speak to the qualities of the contract that you have in front of you that seems to be the point of contention? What you like about that, why that contract format appealed to you? Maybe that could kind of help the audience understand.
Okay, let me make sure I'm understanding. You want to know what I like about what?
The contract you signed that the council essentially...
Rejected, yes.
It's fees based on phases, and it's not, it doesn't have the incentives for the construction manager as contractor. It doesn't have those incentives for the construction manager to be able to recoup the, any excesses in the allowances or in the contingencies. So the construction, the manager, manager of the contract, which the commissioners approve of, construction control appropriate, doesn't have those. And the decisions are kept to the board of commissioners. It's control more than anything else. It's all about control. And that's what more traditional construction manager has over the CMC.
I guess to boil it down in just my language is, that's exactly what it is. It's that I want to maintain your control, our control, local control over this project. I do not want to hire somebody and say, it's yours, and here's a checkbook, and you go build. Here's the maximum you can spend, but you do whatever you want in between now and then. I don't like that, yes.
So the bids come to you, the claims come to you, the change orders come to you?
Yes.
Okay. And then the overages? If you approve whether or not there's any overages, or you approve before it goes above budget? You have to, you have to make that a sort of...
Right.
And is there any accountability in the architect's contract? E, whoever they are, are responsible, they didn't design the thing right?
Let me let the architect answer that.
I mean, they got to, that's what they're getting paid for.
Yeah, of course, I'm the architect on the project. And yeah, there's accountability in the contract. You know, we're on a percentage basis for fee. But at the point of bidding, that is fixed and we move on, so...
But if there's a change order coming up, and you didn't design something right, who pays for that change order?
I do.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Thank you. That's what it works, yeah. Now, there is hardly ever one where it's like, okay, that was ours, and that was theirs. They're all like, they're all different, everyone's different. And you know, you can't have a prescriptive solution. But if we make a mistake, we pay for our mistakes, okay?
So the original bids for the original scope of work, that comes to you, and you approve whether it's a thirteen million dollar project or a fourteen million dollar project. That will land on your desk, and you will have that opportunity to make that determination?
Yes. I get, there's a little philosophical thing here I want to throw in. And that is that I'm a believer in free markets and a believer in, in... Free enterprise. Some of these guarantees that we, that are nice to have tied right into the contract, you've got to also understand that, like when we selected our architect, we talked to other people who like used the architects who included their name. Now, if he screws up on us real bad, he's going to get a black eye out of the whole bid. He's not going to want that. That's the free market at work. And that is probably the biggest control over them that there is. Is that he's responsible to us, and he knows that if he does do it right, that's going to follow it for a lot of years.
This is going to have to last thirty years like our other jail. Well, we're up, what, thirty-eight years?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine? So our other jail lasted thirty-nine years. And my goal is to make this one last just as long or even longer. And I want it done right. Because you only got one chance at this right now. And that's what I, that's what I want for the people. That's why I think they put me up here. I mean, your guys' words comes through me. Because if you got a complaint, you tell me, and I'll bring it out. If my belief is against yours, I will go with yours because you're the people. And that's the way I like it.
But we have had some good comments here brought out to us by people who know what they're talking about. So I'm going to bring it back again to the scope of the thing is, are, we need to select, are we going to go with a project manager type format? Or are we going to go with a construction company that does construction on it and also does the bidding, or we just give the whole project to them? Which way are we going to go?
I want the project manager.
I want the project manager, so, but we have more control. Yes?
Just, I mean, not to complicate things, but would it be prudent to have a joint meeting to discuss this so we can all? I mean, because if you guys sign another contract, and then the council, the council takes it up and doesn't want to take action on it or refuses to fund it, you know, I don't want to do this thing over and over again. It might be, it's your pleasure, but to have a joint session to discuss the merits of all this and try to come up with a plan.
One, two, and three, we got the majority of the council members.
I don't think she wants the...
It's a chance meeting back there.
I have a question for a gentleman down here that sounds like he's been through, he said he's been through both Project Penner's and... Is it true what they're saying, lose all control? That they just hand them your checkbook and we...
Not if you got a general contractor, he was acting basically as your...
So for you to say, because to me, I'm with you, I don't want that either.
It's all written in the contract. It's what's written in the contract. And that's what's wrong here, is the contract. It's probably not the people, it's the way it's written in the contract. You're going to give them all this money, there is, if you give them a fifteen million dollar project for that contract, they're going to spend it.
So what you said is not true, yeah? You're not handing them the whole checkbook, you're not handing them everything, saying, here you go.
Not in the cases we've been in, no.
So it's all based on...
That is the way that this contract...
That's the way this contract reads. But it's not in every contract from a general. A general can be your contractor, he can be your main guy. But, and he can be in charge of the whole project. But a prob, probably a project this big, and I'm going to be honest with you, when we did the fieldhouse at seven and a half million, we hired a project. Why? Our superintendent has been always our guy who watched after, but he couldn't do both jobs. He can't be a superintendent and go after a big project. Same with those three up there, they probably all three got jobs. I know two of them do, I don't know if Bill's retired or not, so... But they don't have time to watch this project. So they, you know, I'm not saying you don't need a contractor, because you do. You need somebody you can trust, somebody you can get along with. If Steve walks in and says, hey, this don't look like right, and him and the guy, they sit down, they talk about it. And they look at, it's all in the drawings. If the architect hasn't drawn right, then your contract manager's working for the county. He's going to say, hey, look, this is not right.
Right.
So...
Any, any contract that's written up is going to specify the county as owner, right? That's going to be the verbiage in the contract. It is in this contract with Mr. Kraus. I looked at the Fulton County contract, thought it read county specified as owner. If you're the owner, you have control, and you can write that in contractually. I don't, I don't understand the point that we just hand everything over, where we have no say. The county is the owner of the project, right?
You want to start going through it, boy, my boy? You want to start going through it?
I would, what I would love to have is a list that we could, that we could review when we have a joint session together. I think that would be a tremendous conversation. It's kind of one-sided.
You know, we thought we had somebody, took this more questions, someone I could trust. That's why we did, that's why I considered the selection. He's got a history.
He's become highly recommended from other people.
Highly recommended, he's worked with counties around us. We've seen some of his projects. Seen Delvales's projects. That's what we see, we like, that's what we like with the jail there. We don't want to skip that, we're going to do it.
I think the common thing when you want a construction manager, not a CMC. So that, if you go back to opening the fifth, that's the next question.
Would you make a motion, uh, Greg?
Yeah, make a motion, and we use a construction manager, not a CMC. It's a good question. Thank you, Greg. We use a construction manager, not a CMC.
I'll say it again.
I'd like to have more control of what's going on there, do. I mean, right there is the guy that's going to design, sitting right there in his chair. He's been kind of quiet. But, Tobe, would you help somebody to understand why you want Jack to? Would you do that?
I, you know, look, I am not in the business of picking methods for construction. I like CM. CM at risk has, I think Ted's synopsis of the CM at risk contract method is pretty accurate. And, and it's really not very well proven yet. And I was pleased when you hired Jack. Because I think, I was pleased when you hired CCI and Jack because he's a good guy, he's done a lot of projects, he's very straight up, he's an honest person. And what you're hiring here is somebody you trust. And, and that's critically important to me. But I think that's why you hired us, because you trust us to, to do what we say we're gonna do. And I don't, you know, we could, we could not have any contractors and go to hard bid and just have, you know, one number come in and you get, you get who you get based on the low price. The, the thing that a construction manager allows you to do is to select somebody on a fee basis that can help you manage the multitude of contracts you're gonna have. With, with CCI, you'll have maybe twelve, fifteen different construction contracts, all of which will be bid, all of which will be the lowest possible price in the marketplace. Um, and, and it's a very controllable kind of, kind of scenario. It's been done in the state of Indiana since nineteen seventy. So it's, you know, it's an old system. It's not like new and experimental. So I, you know, I, I think is, do I have an opinion? Yeah, but I'm not sitting on your side of the table right now. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just the architect, okay?
I'm the, could be the one that probably being the really guy for us too.
Yeah, I mean, really in the end.
At the end, it's his, it's our building, but he's gonna control it if we get it built before his turn.
So, you know, the, the, the thing that's important to me is that, is that I, I can see that the market, the marketplace is stupid, okay? These contractors out there are watching what's going on here. Not physically, but they know what's going on. And, and there's a lot of work in the marketplace and it's hard to find contractors at time to even bid your project because there's, everybody's super busy. So you're not helping yourself at all by getting into this argument. Not at all. Because there're gonna be some contractors and I might even be able to track to come here and they're gonna say, I don't.
Ain't even do with that, that project.
It's just too much trouble. So. You know, the, the kind of discussions about this, when you really look in the end, are you gonna be, are you gonna be happy or upset if the project is within a hundred thousand dollars of the fourteen five or whatever our, whatever our official number is, like fourteen million? If we're within a hundred thousand dollars, then everybody's gonna go, hello, array. We know that. So if, if you're talking about a fee here, everything's gonna be bid except my fee and his fee. Those are on percentages because. That's, that's the market. And, and if the fee were cut by twenty percent, you're gonna save a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, Jack's fee. If CCI's fee were cut by twenty percent, it would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or plus. Everything else is gonna be bid. I, I guess I just, I'm, I think you're, you may be hurting yourself by more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If I get delayed because of this and we have to extend the project another month, that's fifty or sixty or seventy thousand bucks. Just in inflation costs. We're covered through about early spring. I'd like to bid this thing in January. But if it goes much beyond that, we're gonna start adding dollars on. There're gonna be a whole lot more than anything you save with the CM, one way or the other. So I, you know, the, the best thing to do is pick, pick the course of action, come to a decision and move on. Because it's not gonna get cheaper, as you said, and talk about it for a long time, cause it's just not. That's my only concern with all of this.
I thought that's what you did.
Well, you have, but we're, we're like, you're tapping the brakes right now. And, and, you know, I, I just don't wanna see a stop. Otherwise the, the project, the whole thing's gonna like, it'll blow up. I don't wanna see that happen. It's, I, you know, I've got allegiance to this county and, and we're trying to do, we try to come up with a design that's gonna afford and get it done and at the right site. We're not on the path. And you, and we get interrupted, get off that path and it, it's not a good thing. And, you know, and for whatever reasons, everybody's got their favorites. I get it. But at some point, we're gonna have to get over that, realizing we gotta, we gotta project in this county. That's what I'm standing for, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, sir?
Mr. Brown. I've always been concerned over unknowns. And as I quickly, and I'll put myself at a disadvantage, quickly look over the contract that you agreed to. If you assume that the project was fourteen million and fee was five percent for this project manager, construction manager, whatever you wanna call them, uh, does that then limit their fee to, what, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand? They won't exceed that. Is that, that's not what I read in the contract, but I'm asking you, do you believe that their fee is limited to five percent? Given these figures, five percent of fourteen million?
The way I read it, it's not five percent of the whole fourteen million.
Well, in the beginning of the contract, it assumes, so it's fourteen point five million. And they have to have some kind of number, two numbers.
He only gets a percentage of the construction cost itself. It's not the utilities, it's not the ground.
Right, right. But they, they specify fourteen and a half million in this contract.
Right, but I think you said it probably about ten million. I think it's what Jack said would be set in ten.
But that's not what it says in the contract.
Yeah, but I don't say that because we never give them a price of actually what we're gonna be, you know, with.
I, I guess my point of caution is the unknown and that you should have a not to exceed for this project manager, construction manager, or whatever. So that they don't throw in some fluff here and there, document fees and that's in here, you pay for document fees. They do not have error and omissions insurance unless you pay for that, that's in here, that'll be additional. And there's a number of things. I, I went through it very quickly. But that concerned me that there were so many open endings that the five percent of whatever number you wanna use, could be a low number in the very end. And that's, that's concerning to taxpayers because once you start the project and you get the doors on, you're committed. And you're basically held hostage. My point again, not to exceed for every participant in the project.
I wouldn't have a problem going back to Jack and this, up there. So if we're gonna, if we wanna go ahead with this contract, we need a not to exceed in here. Cause he sat right there and said it'll be seven hundred thousand or less.
That's seven percent of ten million.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I mean, I think I speak for the rest of the taxpayers in this room, but I think that's all we're. I'm saying too, it has to have a ceiling. You have to know what we're getting and what it's gonna cost. That's all. Outside of that, I think as taxpayer, I think you got the right thing. It's not, it's not that contract. I'm saying not going with the CMC. Going with the project manager as you have.
So basically, if we put this out for bids, we need to tell them we're gonna pay a cap, a cap fee. But we don't know what that's gonna be because we don't know what their construction costs are gonna be. And that's what this is based off of.
You should have some basic idea from the architect of what this is gonna cost. I mean, granted, when bids come in, nobody knows if they're gonna be higher or lower. Right? It's, it's part of the market. It's part of the construction climate. But, uh, there's the guy that can give you the, the, the foundational cost of what to base fees and certain other things off of. And that's what your budget should be based on.
Like I said earlier, if you got a fourteen and a half million dollar budget, he knows that, Todd knows that. And if, if drawings come in and it comes in somewhere higher than that, there's gotta be a way to make cuts to get it down to fourteen and a half. So you know what it is. It's fourteen and a half million. That's the highest it can be. And that includes all your soft costs, construction manager, architect fees, everything. That's all your soft costs. You know, change orders, all that's in that fourteen and a half million. You can't spend fourteen and a half and then come back to the council and say, I need another bid. Fourteen and a half has to have all these soft causes in it.
As I sit here and listen, I listen to us negotiating among ourselves. When you bid this out, this is what happens. I see negotiations start and you have the control. You don't have somebody come to you, bring a contract, say, this is what I'm gonna do, sign it. You have the control. You're negotiating with your, you negotiate with your bidders. And that's what you're doing here right now.
So what the council's saying, they didn't sign, they didn't approve the money, so that council's voided.
I wonder if they search that.
Then if it is voided, we can put it out there as a, as a cap, what we will pay. And haven't bid on it. Is that feasible? Is that something, that can happen?
Yes, you can require that. You, what you don't know is what the cost of the work is and the cost of the work is, is defined in CCI's contract. Does not include, uh, that five percent on the compensation of the architect, the cost of the land, the rights of way for financing, interest or insurance costs. So there, there are, there are soft costs that are left out of five percent. The five percent is basically based on the cost of the work. And that won't be determined until, you know, I, I suppose you can put an artificial cap on it. But if, yeah, I mean, you got a cap because of the, uh, the way that the body is, we're gonna assume that we're gonna make it so that it doesn't exceed the amount that you have to go through the labor department. So that's really, I suppose you could put it on that amount and he might agree to, to put that in there. Without any, any further discussion. I mean, that's, that's really our, uh, women is, is, the women keep it over fifteen million, the whole thing. But the cost, the cost is pretty, we're all fine. Unlike that other county which is, there's.
We still have a motion.
We still have a motion on four. Tracy, you got another comment?
Uh, I just, how close are we to a cost? I mean, how far?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
How close are we to a number? How, I mean?
Well, Josh just reminded us that we can't exceed fourteen and a half.
No, I'm saying how close are we to a definite number? Architects, soft costs, bill, I mean, design. Surely we're getting very close to a definite number.
I guess I presented this thing, I bet, six times in this room. Construction costs about twelve and a half, thirteen million dollars. The other cost, the soft cost, interest, construction, architects fees, contractors fees, surveying costs, site utilities and so on, and so on, and so on. So, you know, um, boss been here and, and analyzed the capacity of the county and the, the whole financial situation. Um, and, you know, we're, we're, we're all within the, the parameters. So, you know, everybody's asking questions that have been answered in our meeting notes over the last six months that we've been designing this project. And I'm sitting here kinda biting my tongue because y'all wanna come to the room and chop at the, chop, chop at the bid at the end of the, at the end of the deal, but you gotta be, you gotta be well informed and very clear that there's not, there's a lack of information there. Everything will be bid on this project. The, the construction manager's fee is, the, the fee is living on the construction costs, not everything else. Just the construction costs. If you look at five percent of twelve million, six hundred thousand. If you look at five percent of thirteen million, it's, it's, um, seven hundred, seven hundred thousand close. But it's in that range. Um, and, you know, we're, we're professional enough to wanna get you this project for the lowest possible cost. If we can figure out a way to get it done for eleven and a half million, I'm gonna do it. I'm not gonna make so much money, but I got a professional obligation to do what's right for everybody in here. And these guys know that. That's why they hired us. I think that's why they, they wanted to hire the construction manager they picked. And, you know.
Don't ever ask the question like, because the last statements that I heard was that you didn't know how many beds jail facility.
Hundred and twelve. It's a hundred and twelve beds. You know, come to meetings and you can see, I'm right, I'd be, I'd be happy to make the presentation to county council I have made to these guys. But my contract is with commissioners. That's who I answer to. They want me to make the presentation, you know, I can make the presentation. But, you know, the, quite honestly, it's like, who's gonna, who's got the biggest gun here? You guys gotta get over this, I don't think.
That's, that's not it at all. It's, I'm here as a taxpayer.
No, 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 I understand. I don't, you know, I.
I don't really.
Well, I.
My, my guns no bigger than anybody else and I'm here as a taxpayer. And that's a lot of money for taxpayers to spend it. So you're saying the council commissioner, who's got the biggest gun? I think we lost that.